I would like to call this meeting to order. The Wolfman Plan and Journey meeting, this wonderful July 25th at 7:00 PM on the nose. I could ask everyone to stand for Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for what we stand as one nation, not a god, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In the absence of Mr. Thrumman, our normal secretary, I will call roll. Mr. Rappich?
Present.
Mr. Neal?
Here.
Mr. Hoffman?
Here.
Mr. McBride?
Here.
Mr. Rosetti?
Here.
And Mr. Thrumman is absent. As we do not actually have any active minutes from our last meeting, I will make a motion to table this till our next meeting. One second. I'm making a motion. I'm sorry, I will entertain a motion.
I will make a motion.
I will second it.
Mr. Rappich?
Aye.
Mr. Neal?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mr. McBride?
Aye.
Mr. Rosetti?
Aye.
First order of business this evening, the motion to approve a concept plan of subdivision for the Ronkey slash 72 development. Mr. Ray, if you could introduce?
Yes. First, I'll just state that the developers of this project are De Brow construction. They are double booked with the libraries board meeting tonight. The library is supposed to be voting actually concerning this development, so they're attending that meeting and making their presentation there. So I'm just gonna describe briefly. This 40 acres, approximately 40 acres, was part of the Tuscany Woods Phase Two development. That did not go forward for several years, so as this land is right on 72, it's relatively desirable. Last fall, the owners decided to sell this 40 acres to De Brow to develop it. De Brow got that approval, they own the land now, and now they are wanting to move with subdividing it so that they can start developing it, putting in the road, the infrastructure, and looking at tenants for the different parcels. I know they're currently talking with two different tenants. They have kind of abandoned the idea of residential, which was originally what was discussed for Tuscany Woods, at least in the rear part of the property. They're now looking at potentially an institution to go back there and then commercial along the frontage. So at this point, they're just asking for a concept plan approval. They are pretty far along in their engineering, so they plan to soon come back for their final plan and their plat that will require more in-depth engineering submitted to EEI. At this point, EEI had a brief look at it and said that there's no points of concern. Staff doesn't have any concerns with how it's laid out right now, and we're excited to see the commercial on 72 start to move. Are there any questions you might have?
Yeah, on the request, they show a commercial institutional and residential. Let's be institutional.
I don't really know if I'm allowed to say which institution it is, but because that deal is not done.
Okay. I was just wondering.
Not quite, not a box store, institutional would refer to more like a hospital, a school, libraries, something along those natures.
Cool, gotcha.
Thanks.
No problem. And then they said they've been talking to a coffee shop, not Starbucks, but a different type of coffee store, fast food restaurants, you know, other commercial endeavors like that. They would have to come back for rezoning as well, so there'd be a public hearing for that, and they would choose, you know, B3, B4 zoning, something of that nature.
The idea is freestanding, not strip.
That's the idea as far as we know now, yeah. They haven't shown us any concept plans for strip also.
I noticed that on the plat of subdivision, all they have drawn in is the spaces for commercial. They don't have anything drawn in for residential. Before we approve this, shouldn't we have some kind of an idea of what their, what their plan is?
So that larger rear parcel, they initially, when they were purchasing the land, discussed being open to residential there. Since they ran some costs and talked to some builders, they've kind of abandoned the idea of residential altogether. So for that rear property, they're looking at again some other type of commercial or institutional, which would take up that entire land. So that would just be a single parcel, kind of that triangular shape in the back, as opposed to subdividing it further.
You're talking about that southwest corner, right?
Southeast.
Southeast corner.
Yeah, southwest is all pretty much floodplain, so that will be stormwater management area.
I don't recall that being buildable at all.
Right?
Now Josh, with the plan, did they indicate residential first? Or have they indicated, you know, commercial first or together, or they didn't indicate anything?
Again, they're not planning on any residential at this point anymore. So there would be no residential on this 40 acres, as far as their plans are right now. They are in active talks with two potential tenants that are, one's institutional and one's commercial. And then, like I said, they've been talking, they've been trying to get interest from others, but they kind of, they don't have anything to show them at this point because there is no concept plan approved by the village or anything, so all they can do is really talk. So this is kind of their first step to get that moving and make it more marketable.
Because this, this 40 acres was previously affiliated or part of?
Yeah.
You guys should come on in.
Oh, this is Christina from De Brow.
Hi.
We're talking about your parcel right now, so if you guys had anything else to say, I already explained to them that you were with the library.
For those that may not have been here or aware, this 40 acres was previously affiliated or part of the Tuscany Woods Phase Two. And this has been broken apart, broken separate from the Tuscany Woods project. So now this is a standalone 40 acres with the concept plan in front of us this evening. Preliminary, right? Our guests are here this evening. Were there any questions that maybe we could have answered?
Mr. Chairman, do we need to swear them in first?
There's no public hearing.
No, the only question I had was about the institutional part of it, if there was any, did you have anybody in mind when you, when you wrote the institutional part in on the application?
There is, yes, there is. Yeah, sure. There's, I don't think there's a confidentiality issue here. We're in, we're in a contract negotiation.
Okay. Because that's just, that's a little different than what we normally see.
Better safe than sorry.
I wasn't sure. I wasn't sure.
I just thought there was some, some intent there, that's why I asked, that's all.
There is.
Thanks.
Additional questions, comments, bills? Want to make sure we're not leaving you out on anything, revolting as you are.
There seems, there seems to be a lot of questions about what the concept actually is. All we know about is those five commercial spots. We don't, we don't really know about anything else. I don't know how we could approve something that, that we're not aware of.
What, what other type of information would you like, Mr. Rosetti? Like I said before, they will have to come back with their more detailed engineering plans and a final plat before they can build anything. So this is just the concept for the subdivision to, to separate the parcels. Are you, are you, I guess I'm just not sure what else you're looking for, but they are here tonight, so you can address them if any questions. Thank you all.
Well, can they tell us anymore, other than what we see on that plan of survey?
We were, we were seeking, I don't know where you, sorry, I apologize that we were late getting here too. We were seeking like quick service or a restaurant, maybe a restaurant type or a retail type for the commercial. Had entertained the idea, because we had some interest with people inquiring about a multi-unit as far as possibly a nursing home residency. These are all just rough inquiries that we've gotten from people since we've taken the property, when they've expressed interest in what might be possible. Yep, so like a, like a, maybe a small Aldi's or?
Gas station.
A gas station, possibly. There was a couple inquiries as far as that. A dealership was another inquiry. As far as institutional, it would have been something more along the lines of possibly like a library.
Mr. Ray mentioned that you have scrapped the idea of residential, is that true?
Um, I did, initially in November of last year, we had looked at that back, the back 28, approximate 20 acres for being a multi-unit residential. Instead, rather than cutting that out, I am still interested in maybe holding a placeholder for those front acres, eight acres possibly in the front. That could also either be nursing home or multi-unit, like an apartment, to still have that option. I didn't want to completely ditch it because I was surprised that we were still getting people asking inquiries about what could be possible.
Is that Lot 1 that you're talking about?
Yes, on the northwest side.
Lot 5.
Lot 5.
Oh.
Lot 1's the corner.
Lot 1 is the hard corner. Yeah. So it was trying to leave, like if someone were interested, that maybe they could, the way that we were trying to figure out how to splice up the pie, if someone were to come in, they could take more than what this lot, 5 and 4, 5 and 4, they could maybe bundle them together and that would give them, or if they needed more.
Right now, right now it's not good for us to build. In the process of us doing it, it's cost effective, it's not under us. So another person who would look at buying it, who does more apartment buildings, we do more high-end apartment buildings and here is not made for high-end. I don't mean to sound, but we're looking at $2,100, $2,200 for two beds. And in due to this area, I don't think it handles $200.
Well, and we definitely, from the, from the meeting in November, there was concern expressed that I don't want to do something where we're going to price the residents out of having that available to them as well. So finding something that melds well with the, the area that's here, to find something that is consistent with the community. Even aesthetic, even as far as the aesthetic and then the cost of living and what's available, not too high, not too low, something in that, in that middle ground.
Well, once again, my, I'm unclear, is your plan, or does your plan call for residential or not?
Residential in the sense that if someone were to come, if a buyer, if a future buyer were to come and say, I would like to build a nursing home or an assisted living, or I would like to build these parcels and have an option to do an apartment development. That's the only reason why it goes to northwest lots. I was hoping to keep that option open, that if someone were to do that, because we did have inquiries about that already. Amendment, I wasn't sure if that falls under the umbrella of B3 for zoning. Because initially, yes, we were looking at commercial in the front and residential in the back, and then it's, it's, it's switched around a little bit. They're the same mixture of things, but the placement is slightly different. Our goal, we are very focused on commercial, but that's why I think the multi-unit, I don't know if that still falls under B3.
I don't know.
It's our, our forum.
So yeah, Mr. Rosetti, they would have to come back, and they're gonna have to come back and get this whole property rezoned anyway. So.
Right.
If they wanted to have an option open for multifamily, they would have to ask for that in the, in the zoning, and you know, the commission at that time could say yes or no. You know, I think previously it was expressed that commissioners and the village tend to not want the frontage of 72 to be residential. So that could be a consideration. But again, they're not gonna build everything, right? They're just gonna develop the land and then sell it to tenants that are gonna build. So they're just gonna prepare it, and then, yeah, this is just the concept stage. There's, there's a couple more steps in the process before they can actually sell and build.
And this is the preliminary subdivision.
Division of?
That we approve of the subdivision of this 40 acre lot.
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, the conceptual plan or preliminary plan for the 40 acres right now is all commercial. Correct? And that's not the backend. Well, with the institutional use possible. Right. But it's, it's right now you're asking for a conceptual plan with the frontage of 72 being commercial, and then the backend is some institutional use.
Correct. Actually, the whole backend.
Yes.
The whole, right, but the only half of it's used.
Mr. Ray, you said it's currently B3?
The whole, the whole 40 acres is currently zoned R2 residential. That was never changed from when it was initially annexed in 2004 maybe. So you're not, you're not being asked to vote on the zoning tonight, it's just the concept plan of subdivision, so it'll stay R2 until they come back and ask for different zoning.
And R2 is?
Single family.
Single family, thank you. The idea being that if we, if we approve it right now, maybe the zoning never changes and it goes off in a direction which was not our original intent, that's all.
Yeah, right. And our, the only, the only thing that would be able to build after this, well, first of all, they would have to come back for preliminary engineering, or final engineering approval anyway. So yeah, there's, there's no way they'll be able to just build single-family homes or multi-unit family homes without further approval if, if the plans changed.
Questions or comments? Entertaining motion to approve concept plan of subdivision for the Ronkey slash 72 development. Make so a motion.
I'll second.
We'll call Mr. Rosetti.
Aye.
Mr. McBride?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mr. Neal?
Aye.
Mr. Rappich?
Aye.
It's 5, passed. Thank you very much, appreciate the information.
Thank you.
I'll let you guys know what's next. We have your final engineering.
Yeah, we're supposed to everybody on the same. We'll say he's been balanced for a little while.
Alright.
We did rush across the street at our?
No.
No, actually, Russell, for Crystal Lake, so.
Yeah, it's a little structured.
Yeah, so it wasn't that bad.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
Item 5B, discussion of a text amendment to the Highland Commercial District to allow for truck stops as a permitted use. This is just a discussion. There's actually no vote required, we're not acting on anything. We're just using some of our time this evening to further discuss our previous discussions on building signage.
Yes, so if I could, Mr. Rock, the next three items are all just discussion that I am seeking the commission's feedback for before we try to write a text amendment. So the first one, related to truck stops as a permitted use. So obviously, there's already multiple truck stops up in the interchange area. Technically, according to the hard reading of the village code, a truck stop is only permitted if it has special use approval. Now, truck stops have been there for, you know, decades now, and none of them have ever gotten special use approval because the individual pieces of a truck stop are permitted without approval. So retail is permitted, restaurants are permitted, gas stations are permitted. It's just gonna be wrapped them all together, it's really considered a truck stop because it has higher intensity of use. So effectively, they are already being permitted, and there's more that are looking to develop. Thornton's is still looking to develop up there. So this is just kind of a cleanup to put into code what is already practiced. The second thing I wanted to mention here is that Love specifically has asked if they can add a truck wash to their area. Technically, they would need a special use if they were gonna do that on its own, but if truck stops are permitted, then we would just consider a truck wash to be one amenity at a truck stop, which, which staff thinks makes sense, but ultimately, we're, we're just looking for your feedback if that's the type of thing you want. If you want to keep it as a special use and just enforce the code better moving forward, or what the case may be.
I mean, we've discussed for a while that the truck stop is a separate entity. I mean, we got to treat that a lot different than we do the rest of the village. So, I mean, it's a good way to clean things up here a little bit.
I also included an example definite, a very intense example definition of a truck stop from the village's ordinance. They currently don't define it, so this might help add some clarity as to what types of things are allowed at a truck stop and of that nature. So just looking for any feedback, or if you think it all looks good, then we'll draft up a text amendment for your vote next time.
Yeah, we, I mean, I don't know how many times we did Speedway, a couple of, I never heard about the special, we usually never discuss special use.
If I recall correctly, we annexed the truck stop and kind of took everything as it was already established along for the ride.
Yeah, there was, I know Rug Ranger was already there. I think TA was already there.
Right.
Love's has since been built.
Love, we just put in Speedway, we put in a couple.
Circle was there.
Right. Which, yeah, that'll be a 40 second, we'll really get around to it.
Yeah. Only one new to that whole area would have been the Speedway.
Speedway, yeah. We did that a couple of years.
And obviously, the Loves.
Right.
But what is the current zoning boundaries of our truck stop in the area we call 90 and Lot 20? What is, what are the boundaries of that?
So essentially, on the southwest side, on the southwest side, it would be where Love's is, right across that little street. What is it, Love's Crossing, or whatever that little street is now? There's, there's one more small parcel that we have. And then, of course, going back that direction to the west of Dayton Free and?
Okay, Metric Drive.
Yeah, Metric Drive.
Okay.
And then on the other side, we go all the way to the county line, so all of El Joloy, that's kind of the northernmost, I think. So it's just a couple parcels further north, and that's, that's the limits, we don't go across the county line.
So on the west, is it, we go to the creek that really did cut across?
Uh, we don't, we don't quite go all the way to Getty on the west side.
Okay.
There's, there's a large section of parcels, there's four parcels right there that are owned by two different owners. And we have talked to them about some more industrial or commercial type development, and they are just kind of waiting for the market to be right before they sell. That's kind of how we understand it.
Thank you.
Just getting hungry over here, Mr. No, I, I understand, and I think we should define a truck stop in that zoning district to allow for the amenities of a truck stop rather than kind of circumventing, as you talked about, I mean, if we're allowing truck stops in the zoning district, then yes, they should, you know, as the Humley definition says, when allow kind of all these amenities together.
Okay.
I would be okay with that. Whether we kind of do it, but we're just, you know, sneaking around the ordinance.
Yeah, because I mean, we, I don't know how many hours we spent with modifications, signs over there, and you go, you know, you know some big jobs.
We'll talk about that next too.
Yeah. Oh my God, it just went on forever.
Okay, well, I'll take that direction and.
Yeah, any sort of proactive cleanup, as it were, to retroactively get a lot of these loose ends and gaps addressed and codified would be my preference, just, you know, any sort of proactive, instead of just letting it sit or finding what surprises later.
When Love's wants to do something, or when Thornton's comes in and says, this is the stuff that we want to have, it'll, it'll help us not have to deal with it then.
There any reason not to clearly define what is a truck stop and have, have a set ordinance or is that?
I mean, the only, the only potential problem would be that someday, there's some new amenity that will have to get added into it that's not common. Or, you know, staff could just be directed to, so to say. Allow common amenities and that as things become common, and if truck stops change, they could be allowed. You know, as, as maybe electric charging stations become common, truck stops, then they would be allowed. So we, we won't define it so hardly that nothing else is going to be permitted in the future, we'll kind of make it so that it can grow.
That's actually a good point, is that something that you've already looked at, considered?
We are unrelated to this, we are asked, or getting quotes from EV charging station companies to add a couple downtown here to try to attract some people off the interstate that come downtown. So that was just something that popped in my head while I was sitting here.
I should both put that in the footnotes.
Okay.
First one, Mr. Chair? Yes, sir. Item 5C, discussion of text amendment to the sign requirements in the interchange overlay district regarding the allowable number and sizes of wall signs.
So this is what was discussed at the last meeting after variance for Rug Ranger. The village board also approved that without really any discussion, so it seems like they're also have the, they also have the appetite to make this ordinance a little less restrictive. Currently, the ordinance only allows for one sign at a truck stop on the wall, and then if it's on a corner, it can have one on either side. And then the size of the sign is kind of dependent on how far away from the road it is. But as you all in the village board just did with Rug Ranger, there's consideration about truck stops have amenities, and they might have a subway inside or a pizza, pizzeria inside, or some other things that they want to advertise on the side of the building. And it seems like everybody is pretty much okay with that, so just looking to see how you might want to amend it, you know, do you just, do you want to go with that? Just allow one sign per, per tenant of the building, per business in the building, per amenity plus one, however you want to think about it, just looking for your feedback.
If I recall correctly, I think I made notes or comment on that. Yeah, I think it would be fair to any truck stop to have one sound, or one sign per tenant plus one. Because, you know, gaming machines, you know, they are a source of income revenue for the village, they do require permit. So if a truck stop does have video gaming, you know, they can take care of their internal residents, whether it would be a subway or an RVs, et cetera.
Yeah.
Obviously, they want to advertise their own presence and their tenants. That would, that would be my two cents.
So it's like one sign, Mr. Chair, would that be one sign per side of the building, or is, you know?
I think that would be consistent, that if.
Yeah, I mean, definitely.
Mr. Rosetti can chime in, you know, would we want to possibly only allow those signs on the street adjacent side of the building?
I think that makes sense. I mean. The, I mean, I think there should be some limit to the number of signs. But what about lighting, you know, signs that flash and different things too, that could be a consideration.
There's already requirements against signs that, basically the idea is that they can distract, distract drivers, things of that nature, so seizure inducing.
I mean, but for instance, Mr. Chair, you know, if, if we're gonna, we're talking about the overlay district, the, you know, highway overlay district, you certainly have a truck stop, you may have a subway inside, but the entrance to the subway may be on the side of the road. An additional smaller sign above their entrance that says subway, right? We see that a lot, so when we talk about, you know, one sign per business, I think at some point we have to allow two sides of the business.
Currently, the, the code reads as one sign per street front exposure.
Right.
So whether they're actually on a corner or not, basically if they face two directions, then we've allowed them to have a sign on either side. So you could allow one sign per tenant per street front exposure. That, that would be how Road Ranger just did it, right? They have all their signs on both sides of their BGA building.
Yeah.
So that when the trucks come in, the trucks are on the opposite side, right, they can see.
I think from police and the security standpoint, they don't want all the windows with signs, they want to have some view into the building, you know?
Well, this wouldn't be on windows, these would be on, yeah, not into the building. So a wall sign is not allowed to cover a window or a door or anything like that.
It's just up on the side.
And we also have a maximum square footage of those.
Right, so that's another consideration, do you want to keep the same total amount of square footage, or do you want to expand it so that you can have several large signs as opposed to several small signs?
I think we had to, yeah, last time, because they wanted three signs and it took up more square footage, right? And we came to a consensus that, yeah, they needed more square footage if we were allowing the additional signage. So I think that, what those numbers look like, Josh?
Well, yeah, I love reading those stuff out, but.
I would think that would be more on a case-by-case basis as to if there's more sign, you know, more, more, larger size needed versus just giving them a blank slate with it.
Well, the size of the building would have to be a factor too. If a larger building, obviously, would be able to absorb a larger sign rather than a small building, have one huge sign over the whole place.
Yeah, but I think we could use Rug Ranger as a, because we get off and on with variance, right? I think that would be, you know, that's a normal truck stop building, we're semi-normal, right? And we allow a variance, and if that became maybe the standard. you know, that's a normal truck stop building, we're semi-normal, right, and we allow a variance, and if that became maybe the standard, then you could above that, but, you know.
We developed this update from that as a standard.
Would you, would you, just for clarification, would you prefer to see the, the size of the signs be, you know, a hard limit of, you know, X square feet per sign, or would you like to see it tied to something like the building size?
Yeah, I think it should be.
Okay.
Tighter the size.
Right.
The size of the building and square footage.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that would be better.
I mean, because again, if we're talking about tax amendments, what we're trying to avoid is, are these variances for someone who comes in with a bigger building.
Right.
And now they need a little bit of a bigger sign in than we're debating, right, so I think if we go based on the square footage or size of the building, it allows that.
Yeah.
Cause again, now, for the very same reason, if someone does come in with a larger building specifically to have larger signage, larger imposing presence.
Well, that development coming from those areas, we can allow a two-storant truck stop.
Cause I do know that there are studies that, you know, that indicate, you know, much like our street signs, it has to be minimum
Yes.
size, and I would imagine, I would imagine no one would know more than you. You know, I would imagine that there's a maximum functional size.
Uh, Road Ranger, they have put up their signs, um, you know, it's not really my place to say or to decide, but I think personally they look probably like we wouldn't want that much larger, because they do take up a lot of that space and they're very big signs, all of them, but it looks nice on that building, so maybe that, or I'll just go with that and.
Okay.
Now, bigger subway sign, you need, you, how big the building is.
The longer you are.
Okay. I think that's good enough, I'll, I'll draft something up and you guys can vote, check, check it out and decide to vote.
I think conversationally, we can agree one sign per tenant plus one.
That's one. One sign per tenant plus one.
So one, one for, one for your overall truck stop, and then one per, one per tenant, so that would be your.
One per legal entity.
Right.
So is that how you see, so is that how you see your plus one, Mr. Chair?
No.
And again.
So if you're Road Ranger, is, is that, is Road Ranger a legal tenant?
Yeah.
Okay. Cause then maybe you have your slot machines here as well.
Yeah. I think that would be.
And really, your slot machines aren't a legal tenant anyways, because all the slot machines aren't owned by Road Ranger, it's a site company that's doing it, but I would be a tenant as well. No, I'm just, I, I, I'm saying, there, there are separate tenant as well.
He found a loophole.
So, so they would already be part of that tenant.
The plus one can be open twenty-four hours or.
Yeah.
New remodel bathroom, so.
Your very worst.
Yes.
I would.
Hot showers.
Right.
Employees wash your hands. Please. But right, it, it could just be, let me use the, the master tenant or the owner.
Yeah.
Beyond the actual. Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're okay.
I didn't want to say. Still be.
Yeah.
My, my.
Keep it PG.
Yeah.
Level five C, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or, you'll. And it wasn't.
Okay.
Okay, agenda item five delta, a discussion of a text amendment to the community graphics regulation regarding projecting signs, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, so currently the village code does not allow for a sign to be mounted to a wall if it projects more than twelve inches off the side of the building. That's generally allowed for, you know, the thickness of a sign or, or lettering or whatever, it can be up to twelve inches off the building. Uh, many communities, including some that the Business Development Commission has identified as, as communities we would like to grow like, uh, such as Geneva, Otavia, and St. Charles, have provisions to allow for more projecting signs that can go a certain distance off the wall, and they're, you know, maybe they hang from some kind of bar. Um, there's actually two of these that already exist in downtown state streets that were permitted incorrectly by our former billing, uh, official company. So, they do exist, they do look nice, a lot of people like them, so the idea here is to codify that. Um, there would, of course, be regulations such as cannot overhang into a street, uh, might have to be a certain distance away from where the street starts. We could include regulations about how high it has to be minimum and maximum, um, how large the sign is allowed to be, so there's, there's lots of ways you can regulate this. So I'm just kind of looking for some guidance on if you're, if you like this idea, or if you just want to shut down completely, or, or how you want to regulate it, uh, that sense, so that we can draft an amendment to bring back to you.
So these, these would be similar to almost like a shopping mall or a strip mall, if you're walking down the sidewalk in front of all the shops, which would be a perpendicular sign.
Correct.
Specifically for foot traffic.
Correct. So another.
Absolutely read copper barrel.
Another consideration is that you could also restrict these types of signs to specific, um, zoning areas. So you can restrict it to B one, B two, maybe B three, which are going to be your more downtown areas, as opposed to allowing.
Well, we, we have, we already have a legally defined central business district, don't we?
Yes, but it's, it's not, um, I mean, that is a zoning classification, but it's not a defined geographic area. Uh, it's just some of the area in downtown is zone B one, and some of them are zone B two. So if I were going to recommend it, I would say you would include it, and at least B one and B two. Um, you, you might also uh, tie this type of sign to a geographic area, if you just wanted to say we want it on State Street between Allen and, just, just got checked.
Could we, should we, as a village, geographically define our central business district? And then that could be amended, grown amorphously, dynamically, and then recommend that something like this be, would indicate that projecting signs are allowed in the central businesses.
Yeah, what, you've got Copper Barrel that already has one, and you've got Stitching on State, right? Uh, there's, I mean, it's not necessarily projecting out per stage, like, I thought it was one of the ones that was hanging and.
Might be hanging, but it's, it's not projecting, uh, the other one I'm thinking of was Christine Michelle Salon.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Those both look very nice, they're just, uh, not technically.
Yeah.
Again, you know, obviously it's an opportunity to clean something up.
So that would be a larger project to kind of redefine the central business districts, um, I mean, currently it's kind of, like I said, downtown here, it's kind of a smattering of which parcels are B one, central business versus B two, I think it's community business district is B two.
And we've already determined that highway commercial, the truck stop is a separate entity, correct? We have.
Uh, well, you could, yeah, you could say that this type of sign, let's see, by, by permitting it in certain districts, you would effectively prohibit it in others, so if you said it's only allowed to be one and B two, then it would not be allowed up at the truck stop, uh, effectively. Or, you know.
For the downtown area.
Yeah.
You know, even if you're, even if you're looking a little bit further than just to Washington Avenue, you take it down to like Keys or whatever, because you've got some different business fronts that are going down there. And who knows in the future, once Village Hall goes in.
Yeah.
Because we, we do also. Over there, what's going to be in those front locks?
We also technically do have, and again, B one is technically title central business district, but we have B one off of seven two, Old Drive.
Right, and chicken dip is B one. Or not.
Yeah.
Okay, so you could either tie it to a district like that, or you could just say, you know, one of the restrictions on this type of sign could be, you know, provided that this type of sign is only permitted in this geographic space.
Yeah, I, I think, I mean, it looks like from your analysis, Josh, and then you kind of said the downtown area, um, I would be okay with having these types of signs in our code in a geographical area that is kind of surrounding downtown.
Downtown.
I mean, maybe that doesn't, yeah, maybe that doesn't just mean State Street, maybe it means Keys, maybe it means, you know, one block.
Yeah, so this just popped into my mind, uh, with the Business Development Commission, we've done a fair amount of work on, uh, or they've done a fair amount of work related to grants and streetscape and everything, that, uh, we did have kind of a preliminary downtown development plan that we are including in a lot of our grants applications to show, hey, we have a, we have a method behind how we're, how we want to do things. And that does have geographic, you know, it's almost the same as the facade programs, I think.
Correct.
So that would include some of the side streets here downtown, like Washington, and Jackson, Jefferson, you know, one block either way, that type of thing. So if that's what you're looking for, we can certainly do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, guys, fifty years ago, signs overhanging the sidewalk, perpendicular signs to the building, overhanging sidewalk were very common. But the trend was to get rid of all those, and that, uh, a lot of cities restrict, or correction, prohibit any sign that overhangs the sidewalk. And I would like to hear from the Business Development Commission what their opinion is about this. Because personally, I think it's a lot cleaner to not have that, that type of sign.
Yeah. It's a fair point, because I know some communities, uh, I think Humley actually, I don't know, I read several codes, but I think Humley's only, only allows them as a grandfather again.
Yeah.
And then if they are grandfathered in, they're, they're even required to provide, uh, as a village as a person on their insurance and things like that, which I spoke with our finance director about, and she said we wouldn't, that wouldn't really help us, it would, it wouldn't hurt us not to have that, because if a sign falls, it's going to be on them, not the village.
Right.
But, uh.
Well, some, some villages do have those ordinances, they have sidewalk signs, but individual stores tend to put a sign out there for a couple hours and they take it back in again, you know.
Um, the other consideration is that, uh, some communities restricted these just because of safety, they don't want signs falling down, so the ordinance might say that, you, we might include a provision that it has to be, I don't know, securely mounted, and then, you know, some little chains wouldn't be considered securely mounted, you know, it'd have to be something more substantial. Uh, or you could even require that not be mounted by chains, uh, if you're concerned about that.
Yeah, we're not looking to require these, we're just looking to see.
Right. Yeah, some villages only allow signs facing the, of, of, attached to the building, you can't be perpendicular, right? Problem though.
Then you mentioned Humley, because I'm at the, uh, you know, the American Legion, I put my head out from the, uh, outdoor garden. I can't tell Barbecue King from Sam's from Morse Chocolate from, you know, unless, unless you're looking across the square. So I think it would behoove them to have some perpendicular signage to increase the visibility, frankly, so, um, I think that's in our, in favor of it, in my humble estimation.
Yeah.
Not the better acting.
Yeah. Well, some, some businesses that do not have any signs argue the fact that when someone does put a sign up next door, it blocks people's vision of their, say, that's the other thing. Right.
I think this comes under the, under the category of, uh, or in, into the realm of the beautification committee also. Because those signs could be, uh, could be an eyesore when you're talking about the, the, uh, support system that, that, that holds them up, you're talking about, uh, angle iron and chains and who knows what else. So the beautification committee may have a problem with this also.
That's a very valid point, I mean, considering the beautification committee is committed to that particular type of discussion, is, this is exactly what this is, is this type of signage would be beautification and it would be beneficial to businesses, I'd almost actually say maybe bordering out rudely, if they draft the ideas and then set it forward.
My only concern with that is they do not meet regularly. They tend to only meet when they have a facade program application, but Bill Swalwell is the chair of that committee, does sit on the BDC, and the BDC does meet regularly. Uh, so if, if you're amenable to that, I will uh, ask the BDC for their input, which would include Bill Swalwells, and we could even invite the beautification committee members to that meeting, uh.
Would you like me to be involved in any of those conversations, because I think those two committees could blast off some initial ideas. That's squarely under their purview, beautification and business development.
Would we allow them to be lit or not, you know? Kind of a sign that has LED, but also, I, I don't know. But I'm thinking if, uh, obviously this couldn't happen, but if Burger King came on State Street, and they put a projected Burger King sign out, it's lit, it's got, you know, it's, it's that, we're going to allow downtown?
Absolutely.
I think, I, I was trying to say with that, I think we would have to come up with some, some sort of standard for it, is to, well, regulations of size.
Right, we'll need a lot of wooden.
And on that note, there is, if I recall correctly, there's a McDonald's, oh, man, this is fairly sure it's in Arizona, but the village acquired the McDonald's to change the colors of their arches to match the downtown's beautification, the ordinance is codes.
Mr. Chair, even a step further, much like the mailboxes in a, in a HOA controlled subdivision, could we not just say, yes, you may have the sign, here's the dimensions and the font and the thing, and have some, some continuity?
And the color.
This is the.
Sure.
Sure. Uh, and that way there, it doesn't turn into that arms race, I think that we don't want to see.
Josh.
I mean, all various on the spectrum of possibilities.
I would, I would be willing to partake or contribute in business development or beautification committees' conversation.
Sure.
I think they.
I think, again, you're talking about the downtown.
Yep, yeah.
But there's a lot of stakeholders involved in that, and I, I think we should hear from that as well.
Right, I would, yeah, I would. I'm speaking as sole ones making that decision. And then coming. There's a lot of people that are putting a lot of, it's like peers at the downtown, so.
And I'm guarantee, I'll guarantee that.
Big angle iron and.
Yeah. No matter what we put in writing, someone will come in and want to learn of something exactly.
At that point, you know, the, you, you get to look at exactly what they want to do in a program, so.
And then with, if that's the case, and we stick to our guns, what, what we.
Well, that's.
And that's it.
It would be in solidarity. It's really separate, it's still perfectly viable, mission boards.
Right. Right. I mean, as ridiculous as it sounds, the base on seventy-two, which is actually below the street level. So now, what do you do there then, right, do they put the sign on their roof, or what do they, oh, you know what I mean? And.
Don't ask me why I do that.
I think what I would probably do is draft something relatively basic to take to BDC and then ask for their feedback and comments.
Yeah.
Kind of a working discussion.
I can assist with you, and that's what you have to do all of that work.
Right. Okay.
Cause I, I think almost everybody in this village, regardless of whether you're a resident, elected, appointed, or hired full-time, BDC planning a zoning, I think we all do want a contiguous and visually appealing downtown type of business district. Might as well get any and all input on that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And my least favorite of all, I will entertain a motion to authorize the chair to report the results of these commission's actions and things deliberations this evening to the village board trustee.
Second.
So yeah. Can't say them all.
Well, hello, Mr. Repich.
Hi.
Mr. Neal.
Hi.
Mr. Hoffman.
Hi.
Mr. McBride.
Hi.
Mr. Rosetti, sir.
Hi.
Ladies and gentlemen. Uh, Mr. Josh, has anyone spoken to sign up to speak publicly this evening?
Yes, sir, uh, Ms. Meg Dangara is online, and she is here to speak tonight during public comments.
Good evening, Ms. Dangara.
Hello, how are you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Um, I, I guess this is less of a commentary, but I have a few very specific questions that, um, are in regards to the effective screening as the recent passed, uh, chicken ordinance. And I am trying to get clarification, and it seems every source, um, that I am trying to get clarification from defines it a little bit differently. Um, and so I, I'm coming to you guys, uh, to kind of get a very clearly, you know, set guideline, if you will, um, so that we can, uh, move forward in applying for our building permit.
Okay.
Um, so I guess the first question I have, uh, there are five, so the first one is if some, if I can get a definition on what is the all neighboring properties.
Uh, to the best of my knowledge and understanding, neighboring properties is directly adjoining, uh, as in neighboring. Uh, so anything, you know, down the street or even invisible, down a hill, up a hill, neighboring properties, to the best of my understanding, directly implies neighboring, as in you share property lines.
So strictly limiting to a budding properties.
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just, staff tends to make those interpretations, and, uh, if someone disagrees with that, then there's a formal process for which they can appeal that decision.
Okay.
Um, I, I think it's a bit improper for the commission to be offering definitions on the fly during public comments. Uh, not saying that it's not in your purview, but that's, for example, that what you just gave right there is different than what we have told people, which is that it is neighboring properties and properties across the street that could view the screen, uh, for example, on a corner lot, there's a long, a large portion of the street where neighbors across the way. Uh, for example, on a corner lot, there's a, a long, a large portion of the street where neighbors across the way would be able to see. So that's how we define. We have interpreted relatively restrictively as the board kind of asked us to do. Um, so if that was disagreed with, somebody could appeal that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would agree with Mr. Ray. I don't think it's this commission's, uh, responsibility to make those interpretations.
Oh, I would disagree. Uh, it is our responsibility to make some of those decisions because there's been a lot of communications on and off the record to this effect. And I would like to get them cleared up as quickly and forthwith as possible. Uh, I myself have spoken with Ms. Dangara, you yourself have spoken. Uh, there have been several other conversations off the record. There have been two public comments at village board meetings and now this evening's planning and zoning. Um, it is my understanding, I, at this point, it has been made abundantly clear that the effective screening um, is something that is not pleasantly looked upon. Um, so I think with that being said, I'm not entirely sure how we can address this, anything above and beyond the ordinance as it's already been written. Uh, it was not written to be offensive or hurtful. It's not written necessarily to be sustainable or with sustainability in mind. Um, the ordinance was written basically just as a bare minimum set of guidelines for those residentially zoned property owners, uh, to partake in the raising of hands. Uh, this activity is normally limited to agricultural or farming zone properties. Uh, this ordinance is also an elective ordinance. Uh, this ordinance does not require residents to construct chicken coops. Uh, however, for those residents that do choose to do so, they must do so following the guidelines of that ordinance. So I do apologize. Um, I will speak to the determination to define exactly what that is because I think, again, hold myself to get caught up on.
Right, and, and, and I apologize. I'm not trying to do that. I'm just liter-, we are trying to do permit and it has been, it's very difficult, cause the interpretations, you know, as it's being expressed is, is everybody kind of has a different take on it and it's very hard for us to figure out what do we need to submit to get, you know, the approval. Um, uh, it, and so I, I, if that could be very refined, um, that would be very appreciated. Cause if we're screening, you know, 10 houses away just because they can see in our a, a budding property next to us, it just clarification on that would be appreciated. Um, and then the other, uh, kind of question I had was in terms of posts, um, for the, um, the acceptable methods of that would be for whether you're doing, you know, lattice or wood or what have you. Um, are, are there any restrictions that we could be?
We, the ordinance does not make any statements as to the posts, um. I can't say that we could speak to requirements.
If I could offer a way to move forward, Mr. Chair, I believe it would be appropriate to allow Ms. Dangara to ask her questions during public comment. And then we can take notes of those and respond to her appropriately to those specific questions. Because for example, that question is for our building officials, not for myself or, or Mr. Hedges or the planning zoning commission. It's, it's a building officials determination of what the building code requires for fencing. Um, so that's just my suggestion.
We're putting up panels that's technically not, you know, lattice panels, for example, that's technically not a fence. So are we able to use, um, you know, like steel T-posts or U-channel posts? Or, you know, the, uh, metal posts that are used even within the village for street sign identification. Um, we're kind of.
Mr. Chairman, shouldn't questions like that be answered by the building department?
This is what I had hoped to avoid this evening and I apologize for allowing myself to fall through it again. Is, is there a current plan that can be submitted to the village and or inspectors or contextual? Is there, is there a plan that can be submitted for review? Cause again, at this point, we've had numerous conversations off the record. We are in a third public meeting with no definitive plans and a lot of confusions, misinterpretation. So is there a presentation or a plan that could be submitted for review and approval? Yes.
Our, our plan was to propose the T-posts. So that's why we were trying to see if that was, and when I did speak to, uh, SafeBuild, it was kind of, well, that's going to be up to the village. And so I wasn't, uh, clear on if that was something available or not.
Well, Mr. Chairman, since SafeBuild is passing the buck, I think it's time for the board to decide who is the definitive uh, and who has a definitive answer on this. I don't think it's this commission's responsibility.
We are not elected. We do, we decide nothing. We make purely recommendations to the board. We've never made a decision. We've never drafted language. So all we do is review and we make recommendations. So we're not the, the last stop.
Yeah, the type, the type of materials to be used is not our purview. That's, that, like, good lord, Josh was saying, uh, that it's, it's part of the code. That's built into the code of what, what the materials are that can be used and can't be used. So I think that's kind of where, where it needs to go to. Now, if they've got preliminary information of what they want to do, then that gets submitted under that permit for that versus looking at where we're at right now.
Well, well, maybe if you submit, if you would submit a list of your questions, then the village can have whatever department is responsible for that area and respond to that question and we'll get back to you on it.
It, it has to start with a plan, I think, at this point.
Right. I, I would agree with that. Cause most of that information is going to come off of your architectural plan or your whatever sketch or however, however we're accepting them for these plans with the details of the materials that are going to be used and everything else.
Right. Okay, um, so where wrapped the, my questions then?
I'm going to ask all five of your questions this evening. We will take notes and base them on the staff. I mean, that's, that's what we need. We, we don't have any. We will not be able to provide any, any formal answers for you, but we can definitely be a listening board to provide those questions to staff for you.
Okay, yeah, I, I guess if it, I'm thinking that, you know, I know the screening as it's interpreted now is more meant for business and commercial. So if there could just be consideration for, um, in, in the application in residence, um, whether, you know, it's the chicken ordinance or any future thing that, you know, you deem worthy of screening, just, uh, you know, the finances of a resident are much different than the finances of a business or commercial. So I just, uh, would appreciate any, you know, forethought for finances that kind of go into, to have a little more flexibility in some of the buildings that would get approved, um, that are more cost. That's all I got then. Well, we, uh, we appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nobody else has signed up to speak tonight, Mr. Chairman? Thank you, sir. I myself have no. I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting at 8:00 PM.
I make a motion.
Seconded.
Yeah, you're going fast.
Mr. Rosetti.
Hi.
Mr. McBride.
Hi.
Mr. Hoffman.
Hi.
Mr. Neal.
Hi.
Mr. Redditch.
Hi.